I'm going to have you stand. I understand.
Yes.
Say your name.
Okay. I am Henry Porter.
I, Henry Porter.
Swear to support.
Swear to support.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The State of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
State and City Charter.
State and City Charter.
And general ordinances.
And general ordinances.
Of the city of Staton.
Of the city of Staton.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of office.
Of the duties of the office.
Of, uh, Mayor.
Mayor.
For the city of Staton.
For the city of Staton.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jordan Or.
I, David Paddy.
Swear to support and uphold.
Swear to support and uphold.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
State and City Charter.
State and City Charter.
And general ordinances.
And general ordinances.
Of the city of Staton.
Of the city of Staton.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city councillor.
Of city councillor.
For the city of Staton.
For the city of Staton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And would everyone please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At some point, I tend to do this just about every year. I try to remind, especially if we've got an audience, that there's a word in that pledge, indivisible, which means not able to be divided. And we could all certainly hope for that in all the deliberations that we do. So, here we go. Roll call, staff introductions. Everyone's here? Staff that needs to be is here. Announcements, additions to the agenda. Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias? Okay. And comments from the public? Is there anyone that needs to say something? Not on the agenda? If you do, you're invited to stand up there and talk to us.
Wait.
Anyone?
Before you do that, I think I have to declare that I drove past the Golf Lane property today and looked at the site.
Okay.
To consider.
Okay. That's fine. That's all you need to do. Yeah. And that's a nice, that's a nice thing. Other than saying, "Oh, I just don't know what to do." Just declare a conflict and then go on from there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does it matter that I've been on the Planning Commission and I've heard this before? Should I declare that as well?
You can.
I don't know if that...
Doesn't seem to...
I think it's okay to...
Not a problem for you?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, if there's nothing out there right now. Consent agenda, December 3rd, 2018, almost a month ago. What would you folks like to do with that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as submitted? Uh, no discussion. All in favor, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign? Hearing none will declare the motion passed. All right. All right, all right. Next page. Business from the Mayor. Committee and Commission reappointments. With the council's consent, I'd like to reappoint Heidi Hazel, Ralph Lewis, and Jackie Carmichael to the Planning Commission, Dan Bremer and Richard Lewis to Parks and Recreation Board, and Brent Walker and Luke Cranston to the Budget Committee. And I would submit those themes for your consideration and approval.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve? Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, and those people are reappointed to Parks and Commissions. Now, we have a public hearing. Annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment Applications, Hillier Ford, Golf Lane. And if you folks would bear with me for a couple of minutes, I have to read a script for public hearings. Good evening. My name is Henry Porter. I'm the Mayor of Staton, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in the matter of land use file number 19-09/18, applications for annexation of approximately eight acres of land on Golf Lane into the city limits and amendments to the comprehensive plan from residential designation to commercial. The application requests that the property be zoned commercial general. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under Oregon Revised Statute 197.763 bracket 5, is printed and available on the table at the back of the room. If you've not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding the, anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The city council's rules for procedure of land use, public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. This time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of the council?
Sir Jordan, you should repeat your declaration.
Um, I passed, I went on Golf Lane and looked at the site earlier today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was at each meeting on the Planning Commission addressing this topic, so it shouldn't affect my decision at all.
Okay. I was at some of that, but I don't get to vote, so I don't think there's a problem there. If there aren't any, we're now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As stated in the mayor's opening statement, this is a public hearing on two applications from Hillier Ford or Leo Hillier. One is to annex approximately eight acres of land into the city. The other is to change the city's comprehensive plan map designation for the property from residential to commercial. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on these applications, as well as a third application that was submitted concurrently with these two in October. Continued that hearing until November, and following the conclusion of the public hearing, forwarded to you a recommendation that you annex the property and change the comprehensive plan zone map amendment. The third application that was before the Planning Commission was for site plan review for the development of the property. That application is not before you. You only are considering the annexation and the comprehensive plan amendment. The appeal period for the site plan review approval has expired, and no appeals were filed. I will leave it at that and turn it over to the applicant to present their application, and then I'll be back with my staff report that goes into the analysis of the criteria that you need to apply, and a bit on the Planning Commission's and the staff's recommendation to you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Applicant's presentation. And there you go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Ronald Pedd. I reside at 6850 Burnett Street Southeast in Salem, 97317. Hi, I'm, not loud enough?
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I represent Hilliers on the construction of their facility. I'm an architect by profession. Our project scope includes two buildings, one of about 5,000, one of about 20,000 square feet, primarily, primarily is for the sales and service of automobiles presently. Hillier runs a facility at, over by the golf course, not in the city. And this facility located immediately across from highway, across Highway 22 from Power Chevrolet, so it'll be up on the hill. The presence on the freeway is one of the primary reasons why we're looking at this site. It's a good site. It's, the topography is well-suited for what we're looking at. And again, we'll be providing sales, service parts, and truck, a truck shop as well. Approximately five acres of the property will be developed at this time with the rest of us not having, it's reserved for expansion in the future. But we've shown the build-out of the property. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and look forward to staff's report.
You're available for questions if...
I am indeed.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Dan, back to you for a staff report, please.
So, as I said in my introduction, you've got two applications before you. One for annexation of the property. The second for changing the comprehensive plan designation. And then associated with both of those decisions is an amendment to the city's zoning map to assign a zone. If you choose to change the comprehensive plan designation from residential to commercial, there are four commercial zones, and you need to determine which zone is the appropriate zone. If you feel that the application meets the criteria for approval of annexation but not comprehensive plan amendment, then you need to assign one of the residential zones to the property. So, you really, as I stated, I'm not going to go through my seven-page staff report in verbatim, but we'll try to hit the highlights of it and then be available to answer your questions. You have three independent decisions to make. Does the application meet the criteria for approval for annexation? Does the application meet the criteria for approval for a comprehensive plan amendment? And if so, which zone to apply, as I said earlier? The code establishes five cri, six criteria for annexation of property into the city. One of those criteria only applies to contract annexations, which would be approval for an annexation that's granted today, but the annexation does not become effective until the terms of some contractual agreement between the city and the applicant are executed. So, it's not applicable to this application. The other five criteria for approval are that the need in the community exists for the land proposed to be annexed, that the site is capable of being serviced by adequate city public services, that the annexation, the property to be annexed is contiguous to the city limits today, that the proposed annexation is compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and complies with the city's urban growth program and policies, and finally, that the annexation request complies with all of the applicable provisions of state and local law. Three of those criteria are pretty objective, and either they're met or they're not met. And in this case, the property is contiguous to the city limits on its westerly boundary. It is contiguous to the, to what I call the north forty of the middle school campus, the wooded area north of the athletic fields. And complying with state and local law is mostly procedural stuff. In this case, the applicant, is not the property owner, but the property owner has signed the application, has agreed to annexation, the requirements for notice have been followed, et cetera. The property is not today served by city utilities. The applicant has indicated they intend to extend sewer line on Golf Lane and connect to the city sewer, but the applicant proposes to not extend city water to the site, but instead drill a private well. As I mentioned earlier, there was a concurrent application before the Planning Commission for the site development, and as part of the conditions of approval from the Planning Commission on the site review application is a requirement that at such time that there's a city water main within 500 feet of the subject property, the well will be abandoned and the property will be connected to city water. So, those are the three objective criteria for annexation: contiguous to city limits, adequate public services, and compliance with state and local law procedurally. The other two are more subjective and give you quite broad discretion as to how to apply them. The first is that there is the need in the community for the land to be, for the land proposed to be annexed. There is no direction in the code to you as to what need means. There's no direction to the applicant for what information they need to present, or to me as your staff on how to interpret what that is. It is really up to you to determine, do we need this land, or do we not need this land? In the, in the past, during my tenure here, what the city has looked at is the city's comprehensive plan. And what it says for the type of growth that we are projecting to occur, how much land we have currently in the city to absorb that growth, and therefore, what type of additional land do we need in the city to handle the growth that we've been, that we've planned for, that we projected will occur, and have planned our public facilities' needs around. In this case, the comprehensive plan includes a, what we call a buildable lands inventory. And at the time the buildable lands inventory was written, it noted that within the city limits, there were 31 lots that together comprised 21 acres of vacant land that was zoned for commercial uses. Today, so that was in 2013, the comprehensive plan also noted that three adjacent parcels accounted for seven of those 21 acres, leaving 14 acres of land in 28 parcels. And the plan specifically notes that there's a lack of medium-sized vacant parcels available for commercial uses. Today, there are 25 vacant lots in the city with a total of 22 acres of land. And the largest vacant commercially zoned tax parcel is only four acres. And the Planning Commission recently approved a partitioning that would reduce that four-acre lot down to about three and a half acres. As the applicant noted in their presentation, they're proposing to, their development site on this eight-acre parcel will be about five acres of land. So, inside the urban growth boundary but outside the city limits, there are only two areas designated for commercial use by the comprehensive plan. The first is the northwest corner of Shaft and Golf Club Road, and that is one parcel of about 10 acres in area. The applicant has indicated that that's not a suitable location for their business because of the lack of traffic, which is why they're looking for a site on Highway 22. And the other is an area on Mill Creek Road near Golf Club Road, it's interchanged with Highway 22, and that is the current location of the, of the applicant's business. So, there's really not, in my analysis, there's not land in the city adequate for this type of commercial growth, needing a five-acre site. We just don't have vacant land currently zoned commercial. The second criterion that is a subjective criterion is that the proposed annexation is compatible with the character of the surrounding area and complies with the city's urban growth program and policies. Property is surrounded by vacant land today. To the west is the undeveloped portion of the middle school campus. To the south is additional vacant land that's in the same ownership as the subject property is today. And to the northeast, across Golf Lane and Highway 22, is land that's in the city of Sublimity. It's zoned industrial, and it's developed with an automobile dealership. To the extent that the city of Staton has urban growth program and policies, they're contained in our comprehensive plan in Chapter 8, which is really just a justification for the location and size of our urban growth boundary. There's not really policies in our plan that talk about the annexation of land, but there are statements in Section 1708, oh-three-oh of the city's code that does state that the boundaries of the city should remain relatively unchanged until a major portion of the city's usable land has been developed for urban purposes. Again, as I noted above, of all of the land that is zoned commercial within the city limits, we have only about 22 acres of vacant land. Some other comments about annexation. Our city code and our city charter say that if we're annexing land more than one acre in size, that the city council shall forward the proposal to the electors, the voters of the city, in a referendum. However, now about two and a half years ago, I guess it is, the legislature enacted a statute that prohibits the city. It says, regardless of what our charter and code may require, the city may not send an annexation to the voters if the land to be annexed is inside our urban growth boundary, is contiguous to the city limits, and the city council finds that it meets all of the criteria for approval of an annexation. So, again, even though our charter and code have provisions in it for referendums, state law currently prohibits the city from doing so. The applicants also asked for comprehensive plan amendment from commercial to residential. There are seven criteria for approval for comprehensive plan amendments. There are two of those criteria that I want to spend a little bit of time on in my presentation. One deals with the issue that was raised before the Planning Commission's public hearing. The city received a letter from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon expressing concern about removing land for residential growth and what that would mean for our future housing supply. And the other deals with the criterion for approval regarding impact of a comprehensive plan amendment on our transportation system. So, the first deals with the statewide planning goals. You need to find that the plan will still be in compliance with statewide planning goals. Goal 10 of the statewide planning goals addresses, says that the city must provide for the housing needs of the citizens of the state. And the guidelines and the administrative rules that the state has adopted essentially require that we provide a 20-year supply of land within our urban growth boundary to accommodate the projected growth in the next 20 years. So, the analysis that's in our comprehensive plan indicates that at that time, there were 950 acres of land designated for residential growth in the urban growth boundary. The plan noted that approximately 460 acres of land would be needed to accommodate the residential, the residential growth that was projected for the next 20 years, which would mean that we had a surplus of almost 500 acres of residential land beyond what we projected we would need. And what we're talking about here tonight is taking eight acres from residential to commercial. I'm convinced that removing eight acres out of a surplus of almost 500 is not going to impact the city's ability to be able to provide adequate land for residential growth in the next 20 years. The findings that you have in front of you in the draft ordinance were modified after receiving the letter from the Fair Housing Council. The new language was sent to them, and we did not hear anything back since that was in mid-October or so when we got the letter from them. The Planning Commission wrestled quite a bit with the issue of impact on the transportation system. And part of that wrestling was that the applicants, the applicants submitted an analysis under the state's transportation planning rule. The city's transportation consultants said, gee, this analysis doesn't do what is required to be done under the, under the rules. Marion County Public Works expressed similar concerns. If you look at the Planning Commission's order of approval that is in your packet, you'll see that they had a condition of approval relative to submitting additional information or placing limits on the, on the property. Following the Planning Commission's decision, a third draft of the analysis was submitted, and the city's transportation planning consultants have, and that's the copy that you have in your packet. I failed to remove all of the technical appendices from it, so it's quite a lengthy document of stuff that, to tell you the truth, I haven't looked at either. So, hopefully, you didn't spend too much time looking at all of the tables and graphs. But the city's transportation planning consultant said, yes, this third effort now addresses the requirements of the transportation planning rule, and that they have no further concerns. So, the summary of that analysis is that the consultant said that if development on this parcel was limited so that it generates no more than 1,000 trips per day, then the comprehensive plan amendment would not have a significant impact on the city's transportation system, considering the improvements that are planned for in our, in our adopted transportation system plan. So, based on that, the draft ordinance that you have in front of you imposes a cap such that this property may not be developed in a way that would generate more than 1,000 trips per day. So, that's included in the, in the ordinance. So, the summary of that analysis is that the consultant said that if development on this parcel was limited so that it generates no more than 1,000 trips per day, then the comprehensive plan amendment would not have a significant impact on the city's transportation system, considering the improvements that are planned for in our adopted transportation system plan. So, based on that, the draft ordinance that you have in front of you imposes a cap such that this property may not be developed in a way that would generate more than 1,000 trips per day. So, that's included in the ordinance. Finally, the zone map amendment. As I said, if you find that the criteria for annexation are met and that the criteria for comprehensive plan amendment are met, you need to decide which of the commercial zones to apply. You have your choice of four. My staff report provides the description of each of those zones from the zoning chapter of the Landuse Code. The commercial general zone, I don't know if it's the only one, but it's the one that is most closely matched with allowing an automobile dealership there. The planning commission, following its analysis, has recommended commercial general zoning for the property. And so, that's what's before you. Finally, about four or five years ago, the city annexed various portions of street right-of-way. It was at about the time that Marion County was closing down the justice court here in Stateen, and we were setting up our own municipal court. And we wanted to make sure that it was clear where the state and police department had jurisdiction and where Marion County Sheriff's Office had jurisdiction. So, while the applicant has submitted an application for annexation of an eight-acre parcel of land, the planning commission's recommendation to you and the draft ordinance that is in front of you annexes not just the eight acres that the applicant is going to be buying, but the right-of-way for Golf Lane from the western boundary of that property all the way to Cascade Highway and the portion of Cascade Highway right-of-way between Golf Lane and Mill Creek, so that there is not a gap on the streets, on the roads between various sections of city estate and jurisdiction. That would leave an island of unannexed land to the west of Cascade Highway and Golf Lane until you get to this property. But, so anyway, that is the, was the recommendation. Based on the request from staff, that was the recommendation from the planning commission, and those are illustrated in the maps and plans that are part of the ordinance that is before you. So, with that, I've grown on long enough. You've got before you a lot of material. You've got the draft of ordinance 1028, which lays out proposed findings relative to the criteria for approval. Includes the legal description of the area to be annexed, a map of the area to be annexed, and includes an excerpt from what would be the future zoning map showing the proposed zoning of the various areas to be annexed. So, with that, I will answer any questions you may have, and then we can open it up to testimony from the public.
Questions from the council for Mr. Fleishman?
Or the applicant.
Or the applicant.
This would be the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Dan, as far as our code reads when it comes to new business coming to town, does it talk about shall or must hook up to city water?
It has been the policy of the city that development within the city limits connects to city utilities.
So, there's no code?
But there is no requirement in the code to do so. There is the criteria for approval of the annexation that adequate public services be available to the property.
Correct. So, nothing in our code that states, it's been our preference?
Yes.
So, if somebody walks in tomorrow and tells you, I have a piece of property that's not serviced by, or is serviced by city water, but I elect not to. I'd rather have my own well.
I believe that if there is a water, and I don't know what the distance is, but if there is a water main available within, quote, "a reasonable distance," that's not a quote from the code, that's my paraphrasing, then the code does require them to be connected. But I don't know, without looking up those titles of the code, I don't know what that distance is.
I guess that's what I was getting at.
We get into an argument about what's reasonable, huh?
Well, that's why I said, that's paraphrasing. There is a requirement that if water service is available or sewer service is available, the property shall connect.
Other questions, councillor?
Dan, I have a question. How many entities in Stateen that are inside the city limits are not connected to water like they're proposing to do for this?
I'm not aware of any currently. The former dentist office at the corner of Cascade Highway and Fern Ridge that's now MAPS Credit Union, for some reason, was never connected to city water. But that's the only property that I'm aware of in the city that is not served by city water.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, councillor.
So, the property's currently zoned residential. Is it a specific residential? I didn't see that in there.
It is currently not zoned residential. Its current zoning, because it's not in the city limits, the current zoning is a Marion County zone. And all of the land, all of the land within our urban growth boundary, but not within the city limits, is zoned by Marion County, a zoning called urban transition, which, as the name implies, it's there waiting to be urbanized. It is designated by our comprehensive plan as residential. But a specific, the way our comprehensive plan since 2013 has been written for land that's not yet in the city, while we designate whether it'll be residential, commercial, industrial, or public, we don't assign a specific zone to it. The code says, when land is annexed, the city council shall determine, in accordance with the comprehensive plan designation, which zone to apply.
Just another question. So, you were talking about, I was reading in here that at a certain point, that Golf Lane is going to need to connect to that Whitney Lane intersection. And so, I was kind of unclear on at what point that happens and then what steps and how easy or difficult is that going to be to work with the county and ODOT to do that?
In 2003, I believe it was, when the traffic signal at Cascade Highway and Whitney was being planned, designed, built, the city and Marion County entered into agreement about the installation of that signal. Among the provisions of that agreement is one that says that, and again, I'll be paraphrasing here, when the Golf Lane intersection with Cascade Highway no longer functions to an acceptable standard, and that's not necessarily the language that's in the agreement, at that time, that intersection will be relocated to create a four-way cross-intersection where Whitney is, so that the Golf Lane will come out at the traffic signal. Since that time, past 15 years, there's been very little development on Golf Lane that would create additional traffic. This is really the first development that's been proposed. The analysis that was done as part of the site plan review application showed that the proposed automobile dealership would not generate enough traffic such that the level of service at that intersection would decrease enough to trip the requirement to move the intersection. So, I guess the only way that I can answer when will that happen would be to say, the projections that were done for this development said that we wouldn't be there yet. So, it would be when some additional development happens so that there's more, even more traffic on Golf Lane.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a follow-up question for that. Thanks for that question, by the way. So, let's say that next week, after they open and they're approved, an apartment complex wants to be built right next to it, and they go through the whole process. But then they trip the amount of trips per day that would warrant that. Who pays for that? How does that work? Because I know sometimes that's built into some of the fees and the planning or someone pays a portion and the city pays a portion, et cetera. So, how does that work? Would it then just go on to the apartment complex? Or do the people, all the people on the street have to then pay? I don't know how that works.
There are a number of ways it could work. And let me, before I answer that, let me answer the second part of Councillor Orr's question. And that is the difficulty of realigning Golf Lane. I think that working with the State Department of Transportation and Marion County Public Works will probably be relatively easy. The difficulty will be other governmental agencies, such as the Division of State Lands, the Department of Environmental Quality, and perhaps the Army Corps of Engineers, because we have a wide floodplain with what the city's local wetland inventory have called significant wetlands that would need to be filled in, crossed, a bridge over Mill Creek. So, it would be a very expensive proposition. It would take probably quite a long time to get the environmental improvements because of construction work on floodplains and wetlands and will be a significant barrier to development out on Golf Lane. I mean, I think that is the reality. And that gets to Councillor Hook's question. Typically, how things work is, one, the city is collect, from every development that happens in the city, we collect what's called a transportation system development charge. The way we calculate what that charge or fee is is based on the projects that the city's transportation system plan calls for happening and the cost estimates for those projects. So, that list of capital improvement projects currently includes the relocation of Golf Lane and et cetera. So, in theory, we are collecting a little bit of money from every new house that's built in the city or any store or any new development in the city. And that money is set aside to do transportation improvement projects. Now, are the funds adequate to do that? Will we have enough collected in advance when a project comes forward? Probably not. And so, therefore, we would require that that improvement be put in place prior to the hypothetical apartment complex being open. And therefore, it would probably be, in a case like that, if next week, somebody came in with an apartment complex up there, they would probably bear the burden of the costs of that improvement project. And that will be the case whether we're talking about the relocation of Golf Lane or somebody who's going to create enough traffic that the engineers say, oh, gee, now Shaft Road and Wilco Road need to be signalized or any of the other improvements that are in our transportation system plan that will be called for because the city projects to grow. And therefore, we need to widen our roads or signalize our intersections, et cetera. The developer would be eligible for reimbursement of some of their costs by the city either by reducing the transportation system fees they pay. But, again, hypothetically, if their development was big enough to generate, let's just make up a half million dollars in transportation system development charges, but it costs them $3 million to make the improvement, they're only going to get reimbursed up to that half million dollars of their cost. And the rest is their burden to bear under the way our current system is set up.
Other questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, I have another question, too.
More?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, please.
Okay, there was an issue, sorry, there was an issue brought up by one of the neighbors that the, okay, so if it, if the light is down the road, but an issue was brought up that turning onto Golf Lane, like turning left onto Golf Lane, is sometimes dangerous. I didn't see that. I saw that that was a concern of someone's, but not necessarily addressed. Is that something that can be or taken into consideration?
I would say that while it is something for the council to keep in mind, it is not, that issue is not specific to the criteria for approval for the annexation or the comprehensive plan amendment. The criterion for approval of the comprehensive plan amendment is that essentially changing the color of the map, of the zoning map, from one zone to another, that that will not create the potential for development to occur that will significantly impact our transportation system. You've got in your packet an analysis that says that if we limit, if we place a cap of no more than 1,000 trips per day, that while there may be a decrease in the level of service, which is the term we use to measure how well a road or an intersection is functioning, while there may be a decrease, it will still be within what the city considers to be an acceptable level. So, and the more detailed analysis about that was really associated with the site plan review application that was before the planning commission and is not before this body.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Dan, what is the, so we can consider the trips per day, right, in our, for the annexation? Like, we can consider that when we're making decisions?
It's really not as part of the annexation.
Or the comprehensive plan?
It's the comprehensive plan amendment.
Because that's changing that zone.
Right, that criterion is about the comprehensive plan amendment.
So, if they're at 1,000 trips per day cap, what is the overall cap for that road where it would then say, we need to do this bridge that then costs millions of dollars? What is that? I mean, how close are we getting to that? And is there anything that we can do to, I mean, if it gets really close, is there anything that we can do to kind of like share the burden instead of putting that on the next person that decides that they're going to develop there?
I can't, I don't have the information available to answer that question. I can't, I don't have the information available to answer that question. The analysis that the applicant presented, or the applicant's consultant presented, was that with a trip cap of 1,000 trips per day being placed on this comprehensive plan amendment, that there would not be a significant impact on the city's transportation system. The transportation impact analysis of the proposed automobile dealership was that they would not be generating enough traffic to require changes to the intersection. I can't tell you that, "Oh gee, they're going to be doing 850 trips a day, and when we get to 1,342, then we'll be crossing that threshold." Probably, we could hire a traffic engineer to do that analysis, but that analysis was not done as part of their applications. All that they needed to show was that they're not going to be causing the problem, not when is the problem going to be caused. So, that would be up to us. I can tell you that the city is currently working on updating our transportation system The city-level analysis that has been done has indicated that probably in the next 20 years, we will not need to be making improvements to Cascade Highway and changing that. Now, that's not knowing that whether there's going to be a particular development or not, but that's just looking at the growth trends, the projected population growth of the city, the projected overall commercial growth of the city, and what that means for overall levels on our major highways.
So, I guess I'm just confused, because when we're making these decisions, we should also be thinking about the future and tomorrow of like, you know, if something happens, after all this is complete, something happens tomorrow, is it going to halt everything else? I mean, don't we need to look at the full picture? Or, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
We do that in our transportation system plan, and we are in the process of updating that now. But that's based on general assumptions about growth patterns in the city, not a particular parcel being developed in a way that we don't know whether somebody's going to walk in next week or next year with a development proposal on that parcel. I mean, we can't, because we don't know when someone's going to walk in with a development proposal. We can only project that, you know, we have projections that we will be growing by 1.1% per year, and what that means, you know, so you do that over a 20-year period, and that gets you up to around 25% roughly, you know, population growth, and what's that mean for traffic growth, et cetera. And the engineers then look at how will the roads and intersections function 20 years from now with that level of population growth, without knowing whether there's going to be 147 houses here, or 32 of them there. I mean, we just can't, because we don't know when a piece of property is going to be proposed for development. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan, what's the enforcement mechanism to have them switch to city water when the main is within 500 feet?
The Planning Commission's conditions of approval require them to enter into a development agreement, a contract, with the city that says it will happen. Quite frankly, what troubles me is, and I'm still scratching my head, is how do we make sure 20 years from now, when certainly, I don't intend to be here. The mayor may still be here. What's the mechanism we put into place so that when Leo's gone, and Dan's gone, and the mayor's gone, that the city will have, will be able to know, "Oh, gee, that pipe's being extended. We've got to call Leo's grandchildren and tell them they need to abandon the well and hook up."
Correct. And that's why I'm asking, because we have some of those today.
Right. I mean, right. I mean, you look at the decisions that were made by our predecessors 20 years ago, and every once in a while, we open up the file, for some, you know, for whatever serendipitous reason, we happen to pull it out of file, and we go, "Oh, look at that." We've got to figure out, how do we set up a mechanism so that when the time comes, everyone will remember that there's, that requirement is there? Other questions, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Either one of you.
Dan.
Go ahead.
In the packet had said that you, in one of the Planning Commission meetings, that you had suggested a conditional, a condition of approval to look at the groundwater impact analysis, and Aquaphire to see how it would impact the neighboring wells, because that was one of the concerns of many, or I don't know about many, but at least one neighbor, that their wells were already going dry in the summer, they were having trouble getting enough water, and that they were concerned that it would impact them being able to function in their households. Do you know if they looked into that, or?
I have not received any information from the applicant. The Planning Commission's order of approval on the site plan review application did include a condition of approval that requires a hydrogeologic assessment be prepared by either a registered geologist or a professional engineer with experience in geotechnics or hydrogeology, demonstrating that the proposed well will not reduce the groundwater levels at the property line. So, that is required to be done prior to submitting their application for a building permit or a site development permit. So, nothing has been submitted since the time of the Planning Commission's decision in late November. I don't expect to see anything until, you know, for several months, until they're ready to go forward with, you know, get all their engineering done, et cetera. That being said, again, that is, that type of impact is a criterion, or a criteria for the site review plan, and is not
Got it.
...part of the comprehensive plan amendment or annexation.
And so, that doesn't come to the council, the site plan?
That's correct. Could I suggest, we've got a lot more to do here, and there are other times in this for questions from the council. Could we move on through some of the other testimony and maybe come back to that? Not trying to stifle debate or anything, but just for the, we're an hour into this now, and more. So, could we go to proponents' testimony? Would that be all right, folks? Okay. Those that like this idea. Anyone want to say anything publicly? There we go. Go ahead, please. Name and address, please.
It's Bryant Bay, 12063 Golf Lane.
Okay.
And we don't have any problem with the annexation or the comprehensive plan. In fact, we think that Hillier Ford would probably be a pretty good neighbor. We do have a concern, though, about access to Highway, the Cascade Highway. Currently, we have, I think there's 14 residences on Golf Lane, and most of the time, access is pretty easy. But during rush hour traffic, Cascade Highway makes it very difficult to access off of Golf Lane. The evening hours between 4:30 and 6:30 PM are absolutely the worst. Access from Highway 22 to Cascade Highway South is slowed only by a yield sign, and that's about 1,000 feet from the yield sign to Golf Lane. It's difficult enough for one or two Golf Lane residents that are trying to access the highway during that time. I can't imagine the employees and the customers of Hillier Ford accessing it at the same time. Transportation Plan Rules document, November 28, 2018, is very difficult for a layperson to understand, but it appears that there's no intent for a traffic signal or redirecting the access to Cascade Highway. The Planning Transportation Rule estimates that Hillier Ford would add 746 trips per day and 65 trips in the PM onto Cascade Highway. I can't see how this is good for business for Hillier Ford or the people living on Golf Lane. I know this would add a burden to the current residents of Golf Lane. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Or somebody else? Yeah. Opponents' testimony? Anyone opposed to this proposal? Actually, that kind of sounded like that was sort of, I mean, with the concerns about traffic thrown in. Dan, do we know anything about the county's proposals to do anything with that area? Maybe replace that yield sign with a signal or something? Do we know anything about county plans there on Cascade Highway? I'm not aware that the county has any plans. The signage at the ramp off of Highway 22 would be the jurisdiction of ODOT rather than Marion County. State, then. I do know that on the north side of the interchange, on the Sublimity side, the original plans for the interchange included an additional signal where the westbound ramp and I guess it's Sublimity Boulevard, or whatever goes out to Power Chevrolet, as it's called, but at that time, when the work was done, 2011 or '12, or whenever that was, decisions were made to not, to not signalize it at that time. Other than that, as I said, I'm not aware that Marion County has any plans other than the agreement that's in place for the eventual relocation of Golf Lane that the city agreed to back in 2003. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we're at, we did a proponents' point. How about governmental agencies? Anyone have anything to report from any of the agencies we talked to? We don't have an ODOT person here tonight either, do we? I don't know why they would be, but that's a thought. General testimony? People have just a general thought about this that they want to share?
No.
Questions from the public? There are more Golf Lane residents here tonight? Anyone? Anyone else? One person? And there are, what, 14 residences down there?
Twelve.
Twelve? Okay. One for 12. That's not bad. Okay. Back to questions from the council. Ladies, did you exhaust your listening questions?
I had another question, but it's in the section where you said that it doesn't pertain to us, so.
Anything else? How about an applicant's summary? Would any of you gentlemen care to make some kind of, Mr. Hillier himself?
Counsel, thank you. My name is Leo Hillier. I reside at 24383 Northeast Airport Road in Aurora, and thanks for letting me apply to build a new dealership on Golf Club Road. I can just, I just want to address any other questions that maybe I can ask, but I think most of all, I want to give you a vision of what I see, is I see the gateway to the city of Stateon there on Golf Club Lane. You look at the gateway to the city of Sublimity, it's, you know, Power Chevrolet has a beautiful dealership, LaSchwab, that's a staple of any city, nice hotel, and then a nice office building, and then across the street, there's some storage units, and a nice motorcycle facility, sales facility with a nice developed, you know, entrance to that road down where you go up there. And it's basically just a flip. I mean, it's, as far as the traffic goes, it's pretty much on the one side of 22 and to the other side of 22. And we've answered all the questions with the traffic studies, and it takes it from a grade, I don't even think it drops the grade. I believe it was, right now, it's a grade C, and with our facility there, it'll still be a grade C. So, I mean, it doesn't take it to a different level of danger or anything for the traffic. And I feel that we've answered all the questions, and, you know, that the Planning Committee asked us to do, and the, I'm just trying to think of some analogies here, and I hope I don't step on any toes, you know, but, you know, I've just got my 20-year plaque, 25-year plaque, or we did, 25-year plaque at Woodburn for being a Ford dealer for 25 years. That dealership, that facility is, I'm going to say it's 20 years old, 22 years old. If you drove by it today, I think you'd have to agree that it looks like it's less than five. So, pride of ownership, my son and I, and my son-in-law, we have it. And we plan on, you know, building a nice facility up there that'll be pleasing to the eyes and do the community a good job. I like to bring Stateon forward into Stateon, and where it should be and where it used to be. So, I'm just, you know, I'm, my vision is a nice facility and making that whole area, you know, a nice place for the gateway for Stateon. I don't know, I don't know, because I'm standing here, I feel under pressure not to say the wrong things, but what else would be a pretty entrance to your city, other than nice, fresh, new, you know, business or businesses? And, I mean, a kind of a, I want to just bring this up, my son scared me because he said I shouldn't, but, I mean, look at the interchange of Woodburn. It's brand new. You know, ODOT sees new facilities, new businesses there, and the, you know, the Outlet Mall spent some money there, a lot of money. It's a beautiful facility. It's almost, on both sides of the freeway now, every business there is almost new, you know? And ODOT saw the, so that's what they do. They built us a brand-new, beautiful intersection, you know? And that didn't just happen. That happened because of growth. And you go down the road to Brooks, and what do you see? A truck stop and a truck, you know, parking lot. And why is it at Brooks, which is closer to Salem, why did it happen in Woodburn? Growth. And without growth, we're going to stay, you know, like Olmsted, I mean, where I'm at now, you know? I mean, it's, so lots of farming land, and the dealership that I have now make a great, hopefully, you know, and I've cleaned that up a lot, but it'll make a great farm and feed store for the community. I would hope, and, but with growth and trying to do the community the right thing, and I just sure hope that I can build you a I just sure hope that I can build you a new dealership and do a good job of it. And, you know, the, so I addressed the traffic study. The other thing that I just want to address is really the water works or public works, it's kind of a business for the city. So when there gets to be enough call for water up there that makes it profitable for the city, whether participants of, you know, the people that are going to use it or whatever, when it makes sense, which Dan said 20 years down the road, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, then that will happen. But today, it just doesn't make sense. I've said this in planning, that I went to see what I needed to do to drill a well because it sounded, you know, complicated to me. So I made sure I covered all my bases, and I went to county, and they said, we don't, I couldn't find anybody in county that even cared where or when I drilled a well. So I go to state, I go down by the Capitol Building and Oregon State Water Resources, and I seriously had to ask about four or five times, who do I talk about to drill a well? Well, I'm there for about 10 or 15 minutes, a guy comes from downstairs, and he says, are you the one asking about a well? I go, yeah. And he goes, go get a well driller. He sends in a permit, or he asks us for a permit for $89, and you drill a well. And I said, it's that easy? And, you know, we're talking about drilling a well in the state of Oregon. I mean, it's not a complicated process. I think anybody on any piece of property can drill a well anytime, anywhere that they want to. I mean, in fact, I don't think, I know, if you check into it, that's the way it works. We can all drill wells. So the well, I mean, it's not like I'm going to run a, I don't know, make bottled water out of it. I'm going to, you know, have a nice, clean wash center and just let a normal business use for water. My water bills, and we presented that to planning, the water bills are well, well, at my dealership in Woodburn, well within the perimeters of having a well without going like, without doing like a public well. If it's going to be public and it's, there's so many people drinking out of it, then you have to have certain tests. This one doesn't even get close to that for the dealership to have that deal. I don't know, I stand here, I'm going to ask the council, thank you for letting me visit with you, and I'm open game. I mean, ask me, I'll try and answer it. I'll tell you, I don't think you'll find anybody more sincere about taking care of the community and keeping my facility looking nice and trying to do a good job for the people and have a good dealership. As I say, I was just awarded my 25th anniversary. I can't believe I've been a Ford dealer for 25 years, but I have. And so, questions? And I'll do my best to answer any of them for anybody. You don't have to be up there or anybody.
Mr. Hillier?
Sure.
It's my meeting, so I guess I can ask questions.
Sure.
You've done traffic studies at Woodburn and probably out here on, at the Golf Club where Stateon Ford is. What kind of traffic does the dealership, dealerships generate?
Very good question. I want to tell you that the 750, I, my office at my dealership today is at the corner of the building, so I see every car that comes and goes. That number of 750 trips is nothing beyond ridiculous. Not going to get close to that.
What are some of the numbers, please? What happens out here at the Ford dealership, the local one here? How many a day? Three, 400?
No. I wish, I wish I, you know, had 400 people. You take, how many ROs do we write, Jeremy? We've done the math real quick.
Thirty.
Thirty? So there's 60 to pick up and bring back, okay?
Employees, 35.
Yeah? So another 60 or so, yeah, we're at 120. UPS, five, you know, 10. What else would there be?
Car.
Yeah? There's, you know, not as many as I'd like, but let's just say 10 a day. You double that there and back, that's 20. We're getting close to 100. Salesmen, you know, all employees, I guess, yeah, because I have 50 employee, I have 25, there'll be 30 employees at this one, 25 to 30, so there's 60, ROs is 60. I mean, you have to sit there and do the math, and it's hard to come up with, huh?
Two fifty.
And we did a study, and the study came back at 750. I mean, I wish I could create a sales event that would, you know, line back up on 22, but I don't think that happens today.
So presently, about 200, 200 to 300 maybe?
And that's at the most.
That's max.
At the most.
Okay.
But we've studied, we've cleared, I mean, we've cleared and has all, we have all that approved through, through planning.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we've driven that road and crossed that bridge.
Well, just, yeah, but just-
But I appreciate the question.
Present numbers hadn't been discussed here. We talk about 800, 700, 1,000, that's-
Not close.
What are the real numbers? Okay.
Uh-huh. Good question.
Anything else for Mr. Hillier?
Page anything? Jordan? David?
Just thank you for coming up and telling that story. I liked it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Thank you.
All right. Staff summary. Dan, what else can you do with us tonight or to us?
To you. So you heard the applicant describe his vision for the gateway to Stateon. I think a good portion of the decision that you have before you this evening is deciding to a certain extent how well his vision of the gateway to Stateon matches your vision of the gateway to Stateon. Again, set aside the issues of site design and the impacts of this development, because this development is not before you. What's before you is whether to annex the property and whether to change the comprehensive plan designation from residential to commercial. The impacts of traffic, the state's transportation planning rule and the court's interpretation of it say, we're not looking at Mr. Hillier's proposed development. We're looking at, quote, "the worst-case scenario," unquote, of what could happen if we change the zoning. Because if we change the zoning and the comprehensive plan designation, Mr. Hillier could decide to go away tomorrow, but the zoning stays there, and somebody else could come along and go, oh, it's zone commercial general. I'm going to do a dozen fast food restaurants because it's eight acres of land. And so that's the analysis you need to look at. And that's why the transportation, transportation planning rule analysis that was submitted to you says if the traffic from this site is limited to 1,000 trips per day, then there will not be a significant impact on the transportation system. It's not if you change it to commercial general, there won't be, but if you change it to commercial general and you limit it to no more than 1,000 trips per day, then there will not be. The development proposal that was submitted to the Planning Commission falls well within, as you heard, well within the 1,000 trips per day cap, but it will have an impact on future expansion of this dealership or future uses of this property should this dealership, for whatever reason, not happen. And again, this, there's not a development proposal before this body. So with that, following a two-night public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval of both of these applications to you and recommends that commercial general zoning be applied. Staff makes the same recommendation to you, but you've got options. You may, and in front of you is a draft of Ordinance 1028, which in Exhibit 4 lays out staff's proposed or recommended findings and conclusions to you. You may approve both applications and the first consideration of the ordinance as presented. You may approve both applications and make some modification to the ordinance. Should you choose that option, then the city charter requires that the ordinance return to you for a second consideration. You could approve the application for annexation and bring this land into the city, but keep it in the residential zone. Obviously, that won't do Mr. Hillier any good, but you could make findings that the criteria for approval of annexation are met, but the comprehensive plan amendment are not. That would obviously require some modification to the findings and the conclusions. You could deny both applications. And all four of those options are assuming that you are satisfied that you've heard all the information you need, that there is no reason to continue the hearing, and that would be your fifth option, is to continue the hearing until your next meeting. You could close the hearing tonight, but request or, I'll keep the record open for written submission, but not have any additional oral testimony. Or you could close the hearing, the record, start your deliberations, but not reach a final decision tonight and postpone any final decision until your next meeting. So those are the seven options that staff has presented to you, and for each of those options, you've got a suggested motion to do so. And with that, I will shut up because we've now been here for almost an hour and a half.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I like that. Thank you. Does anyone have any reason not to close the hearing?
Would you like to shut up?
Anyone? I'm going to go, close the hearing, then we'll go to council deliberation. Folks, what do you want to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jordan.
So Dan brought up the point of how do we, with the whole well and water and everything, if we go ahead with this, then how are we going to, you know, follow through with that and hold them accountable?
Well, if I read this right, as Dan has said a couple of times already this evening, that that, those things are, it's another part of the puzzle here that we really don't have to consider tonight.
Okay.
It's not part of, part of this, this Troy tonight. So, but that's been anticipated, so if I read it right, if I understood Dan over several minutes of discussion, I think I did.
Discussion.
Anyone else? Other thoughts? Yes?
Yeah, so it is part, like, not that site in general, but the land that it's capable of being serviced by adequate city public services, that's one of the, I think, the conditions. But if it's going to be on a well, that's not, that's where my concern is. It's not really then being serviced by the city. Everybody else kind of has to hook up to the city, and so I'm wondering, I'm worried that we're setting a precedent and that 20 years from now, it's going to come back and bite us, and people are going to go, what were you thinking? Why, why did you do that? That's, that's my main concern with the annexation, is just the fact that they, that this won't be hooked up to city water, this land.
We could, you know, no money involved a small wager that it happens within five years.
We don't know.
No, of course not.
Yeah.
But if you were a wagering person-
I'm not.
Not gambler.
Nope.
I would almost think that within five years, but that's, that's not inside information or anything either, it's just a, just a thought. Other, other thoughts, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I actually agree with Page. The problem is, is that the criteria doesn't have a sunset clause on it, there's no date. It just says adequate city public services. Doesn't say at what point, doesn't say within five years, et cetera. So I do share her consideration and her concern, and the only way to fix that now is to make them hook up to city water at this point, which would also eliminate the future chasing, making sure they do it when it's, when it's within 500 feet.
Dan, how far away, how far away are we from a water main now?
1,300.
Uh, last-
Yeah, it's about 2,300 feet.
2,300?
Yeah.
Okay.
There are ways for us to get around this, but that would, again, have to be within the site development permit stage. I think we talked a little bit about that already amongst the city engineer myself. We could set up a mechanism, but of course, Hillier would have to be approved of that with putting money up front or give us a performance bond for the amount of what it's going to take for them to build their pipe through their property line. Obviously, they don't need to do it now, but at least give us a performance bond that maybe extends 20, 30 years. I don't know. I mean, there's, I think there's ways to go about getting it done. Of course, they're going to have to approve it within a developer agreement, but that doesn't take place until we get into a developer agreement for the site development permit.
So that's, that's down the road, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts? Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So this land is in the comprehensive plan, kind of set aside for residential, and I, I get that it's only acres, but is, maybe this is a question for you, I'm sorry, Dan, do we or can we consider at all that this might be one of the only areas that we can put like a multifamily on? Because we don't have very many of those in town. Is that something that we consider or not? Do you understand my question?
I'm not a, yeah, well, sort of. I'm not an advocate, but somebody comes to me and says, I want to borrow a bunch of money to put a bunch of apartments or duplexes or single-family homes right next to a freeway.
Yeah, I don't like that spot either, really.
I mean, that's, that's pretty attractive, isn't it? I mean, don't, a lot of people want to live on top of freeways. And that really is, that's on top of that, of that four lane. I don't know, that might be kind of tough. Maybe. I don't know. Just a thought. This may be the best, the best use for that land.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, please, Chris. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applications of Leo Hillier for annexation and comprehensive plan amendment and assign commercial general zoning to the property by acting Ordinance Number 1028 as presented.
Seconded.
Is that, is that-
Number one.
Number one option?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion and a second to approve both applications and the first consideration of Ordinance 1028. Alyssa, would you hold the council, please?
Of course. Counselor Hook?
No.
Counselor Quickly?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. If the vote is not unanimous, Ordinance 1028 will be brought before the council with a second consideration at the January 22, 2019 meeting. Okay. So that's that. The council's action, I have to read this, too.
Well, you haven't-
I'm sorry.
You haven't taken final action, so I don't think your closing statement-
All right. Closing statements later.
Is appropriate until after the- Is appropriate until after the ordinance is enacted at the second consideration.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dan. Keep us going here.
But that, that, sort of editorial comment for the audience's behalf, that essentially was a decision by the council, but it isn't the final, final decision. Because it was not a unanimous vote, our charter requires that the ordinance have a, what most cities call the second reading. For your sake, you're lucky we didn't make you sit through reading the entire ordinance.
Thank you. Hour and a half into this, let's take a couple of minutes, those that need to escape can, and we'll come back to some more business in a few. Let's, does everybody hear this? Let's go back to work and get some more, a few more things done and get out of here. We don't have any unfinished business, new business, appointment of a council president. Alyssa, would you like to take us through this, please?
I sure would. So per the state and city charter, every year, the council chooses a member of the council to serve as the council president. So it's up to you guys to decide who you'd like to appoint. Counselor Quigley is who served last year. And you can offer up a motion of who you'd like to appoint, or?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to have Counselor Quigley being the council president.
Okay. One nomination, is there, are there any others?
She made a motion, too.
Seconded.
Okay, a motion and a second to have Counselor Quigley serve.
Do I gotta say on this?
Thank you for that last year.
Well, yes, I guess. You've done this before.
I'd be honored to be the president again, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I guess the good thing about council president is that that person can keep their vote if they are acting in capacity as mayor. If he or she is not able to do the job, or is not here. And rather than lose their vote, that person can keep voting, but just can't break a tie. So that's all in the charter. So.
I think we need to.
Vote of confidence, maybe?
Yeah, we need to vote on the motion.
Yeah, vote of confidence.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Okay. Pose same sign, hearing none. Counselor Quigley is declared council president for, this is what, how many years? This is four, at least.
Yes, four, I think.
At least, yeah.
Thank you.
We've been at this a while.
Yeah.
Neighborhood improvement grants, Mr. Fleishman, please.
Thank you, nice to be back. So this year, for the first time, the city council included in the city's general fund budget, a new line item of expenditure for neighborhood improvement grants. There was $5,000 appropriated. For those of you who are not sitting here for the first time tonight, or maybe you were at those meetings in the summer, I don't know, but back in August, staff brought to the city council the proposed structure of the program, criteria for assessing them, the applications. In September and October, we sent out publicity about the program, developed the application process in more detail, and applications were due by the end of November. We received two applications. One from a group of neighbors in the West Town area that proposed improvements to the West Town Park with a budget of about $3,300 for that work, and sidewalk repairs within the neighborhood with a budget of $1,700 for that work. That application did not offer to provide any matching funds, either cash or in-kind services. The second application that we received was from a group of neighbors in the Sylvan Springs neighborhood for improvements to the walk path that goes through the neighborhood. The subdivision plat for that neighborhood established a public access easement, and there is a paved path that goes along the wetland area on the north side of the neighborhood. Their proposal is to do what I've called vegetation management along the path where it's been substantially overgrown. They'd like to install some lighting, and some park benches, and a dog waste bag dispensing station. Their project has a total budget of almost $6,000, with 2,500 coming from the neighborhood improvement grant. They'd be providing a $350 cash match, and they are saying they'll have just over $3,000 in in-kind contributions of donated equipment, labor, and materials. So the two grant applications together, obviously, are more than the amount available to be funded. So while the Sylvan Springs group is coming with a match that would create value of more than twice what the city would be contributing, the recommendation, oh, and also, while the budget for the West Town Park improvements is $3,300, the Public Works Department has indicated that they could do the work and contribute some city funds and get that project done. So the recommendation from staff is to fully fund the Sylvan Springs application with $2,500 in grant funding, and to fund the West Town application at a level of $2,500, with the understanding that the Public Works Department will make up the difference, and that new surfacing at West Town Park would be installed this spring. The options before you are to go with the staff recommendation to fund both of them, or just to fund one or the other, or to choose not to fund either project.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
While I should've done this earlier, I do have a conflict of interest, I do live in the Sylvan Springs area, so I'll be recusing myself from deliberation and vote on this issue.
You can do that, you can also just declare that you live there, and go ahead and vote. I'd rather have people do that than stay out of it.
Well, I think it would persuade me, considering I've actually been out there cutting back blackberries with them. I think we know what my vote's gonna be, so I'll recuse myself. Thank you, though.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or thoughts? What do you folks want to do with this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, am I understanding that correctly, that both of these will, at the end of the day, like, be fully funded, and they get everything they wanted, right? Okay. And it says something about, like, they had some type of selection framework that the city did, like, what were the metrics to, I mean, if there were, like, seven people that had applied, what were the, what are the metrics that, I didn't see them, of how they're selected?
The very last two pages of the packet have the assessment criteria in them. And there were threshold criteria that a project needed to meet. What, six different criteria that if the answer on any of those were no, then it would not be eligible.
Got it.
And then various objectives to try to compare them. You've got my assessment in front of you there, and I think if we had received seven applications, I probably would've put together some type of committee, so it wasn't just me. But where there was a simple, shall we say, solomonic decision or recommendation here to make, to cut the baby in half and give half to each mother, and knowing that with the Public Works Department saying they'll make the other project whole, I think that we can.
I got distracted by the flashy color stuff and did not turn the page to the last two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
I just wanna interject. Dan came to me with this idea, it was something that we were hopeful would have some support. We put 5,000 for the first year, I think. Staff will be making more recommendations, and we kinda like this idea and this approach, and hopefully, in this budget, will bring forward opportunities for expanding this. But this was an idea that Dan had, came to me, and this was really sort of our test. So it was nice to get applicants, and I hope there's success here, and I hope that this program can expand and grow, and seems like a positive way of doing things. So I just wanted to bring up, give Dan credit for where it was, and then talk about this and kinda where we're hoping this can go in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So for the, what is it, the West Town application, would it be possible, and so I don't know what, I apologize, I don't know what the parks budget is, but would it be possible to fund the sidewalk improvements, and then the rest of the $800 of the 2,500 go towards the park, and then have our parks department cover the rest of that? Is that a scenario? Is that one?
You got me into this.
Well, that's not the proposal that I went to the Public Works Department with.
Gotcha.
I, in my mind, I just see the sidewalk improvements as fairly important, myself.
The Public Works Department committed a certain amount of dollars, whether they go to the sidewalk, or the resurfacing of the playground equipment. I mean, that's pretty significant, too. You don't want your kids falling on hog fuel that's got chips and things in it, so, you know, we'll get it done, one way or the other. We've got a certain amount of money that we allocated towards it, and we'll do what we can. I'm not really sure off the top of my head what Dan committed for me, but I just nodded yes, I'll help out where I can. Sorry, I probably didn't answer your question. How much money was it, Dan?
$800.
From the Public Works Department?
From, well, yes.
All right.
And I'm proposing 2,500.
I'll work with them to see what we can do. That's what I can say. We wanna restore our surfacing in our parks, so I'd have to see what that is and what that entails. We do have a sidewalk program coming up in the next month, and maybe we can get it done at that point as well. I just know, I don't know the full gist of the project at this point.
Gotcha.
But we'll get it done.
Yes, go ahead.
So this does include the sidewalk, though, is what we're talking about. I'm confused now with her question, like, it doesn't?
The recommendation from staff to the council that's in the staff report is to appropriate $2,500 to the West Town project, which would go to the playground resurfacing. And the sidewalks would not get done in West Town under this project.
That's what I thought I was asking, when I asked my question, the first one.
Well, the good thing about the application is it says if any funds are left over.
Right. Right. Yeah. I had several phone calls with the woman in the West Town neighborhood who put together, who organized the neighbors and put together the application throughout October and early November, and she was the only one I heard from. So I kept telling her, "You're the only one I heard from." And then, like, three days before the deadline for submission, the application from the Sylvan Springs group showed up. I'm not even quite sure they asked any questions, it just sort of appeared. So I had essentially had encouraged the West Town group, "Well, you might as well ask for all the money, because it doesn't sound like anybody else is asking for it." So I think they had the park project in mind, and said, "Gee, if we can get all the money, let's also do the sidewalks."
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
I have a thought.
Go ahead.
And it's not anything we can do now, but, and this is a new program, and I'd love to see something in here with the metrics, talking about the, like, average family income in a certain surrounding area of this neighborhood, that that maybe weights it a little bit heavier, so that maybe some of the areas of Stateon that, that they don't have the money to match these funds, they don't have the money to bring it together, that they're getting a little bit extra help to make their neighborhood better. Because now you have one area of town that's gonna get their full thing funded, because, and they have all these matching funds, but then we didn't quite make it with the sidewalks for the neighborhood, which is, I mean, with this proposal. So, just a thought.
Okay. Other thoughts? If not, let's go to the decision on this. What do you folks like to do? Go ahead.
A motion that we fund both applications as recommended by staff, so we move toward a neighborhood improvement grant to the Sylvan Springs application for 2,500, and to the West Town application for West Town Park improvements for 2,500.
Okay.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second to approve both applications as recommended by staff to the neighborhood improvement grant, $2,500 to the Sylvan Springs application, and $2,500 to the West Town application, West Town Park improvement. Okay? You've heard the motion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes, five to zero.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Counselor Hook touched on this thing, we're gonna move toward a, or try to, anyway, some kind of a neighborhoods, we're gonna work on neighborhoods this year. And it's kind of a seed of an idea, but we're gonna try to work on that. This is one of those things, and there's that idea that disparate neighborhoods will need different things, have different resources, but need different things. Are there any staff and commission report? None tonight? Any comments from the public at this point? Okay. Business from the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is, Dan foreshadowed earlier, that we are updating our transportation system plan, or TSP, and I wanted to publicly announce, we put it on our social media page, but there will be a second open house that will be held this Wednesday, January 9, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. At the State and Public Library Meeting Room, and the open house will be an opportunity for participants to share their thoughts and concerns on proposed long-term improvements to state and its transportation system. I do wanna note that there will be a virtual site as well, so people can offer the same opportunities online, and they can check our Facebook page or contact City Hall for information on that. Dan and Lance, did I miss anything with that? You wanna add?
No, I would say it's been a three-part plan so far. What we talked about, the first two, are existing conditions and problems that we've have occurred. This one is pretty important, because this is the future of your roads, what things are gonna look like, traffic circles, or roundabouts versus lights, things like that. So if you wanna have a say in what your community's gonna look like, now's the time to come, tomorrow night, or Wednesday night.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anything else?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything else this evening. Business from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had several folks that are on the 1019 Committee attend the meeting tonight, thinking that we were gonna discuss some of it. I'd like to have a future data that we could, some point, I'd like to get that meeting, those discussions started, so maybe work on that next week, so we can get it out to the folks. Thank you.
All right, good. And thank you, Brian. Future agenda items for the 22nd are a public hearing on the Village Creek No Parking on One Side of the Street, economic development, Trails Program that the city is involved with to some extent, and council liaisons. So there'll be a chance to So there'll be a chance to go visit your favorite other meeting and share with us what these other, other concerned groups are doing in our city. With that, we're gonna adjourn and go to executive session over in the library. So, purpose of the session is to consult with legal counsel regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed pursuant to Oregon Revised Statutes 192, 660, 1 bracket 2 bracket H. And with that, we're done here.